Okay, I'd like to call to order a meeting of the City of Santa Rosa Planning Commission, and ask for roll call, please.
Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present.
That takes us to approval of our February 8 minutes. Do we have any changes or comments on the minutes? Not seeing any, those will stand as printed. Next on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity on the agenda for any member of the public wishing to speak on matters of interest to the commission that is not also noticed as a separate public hearing. To come and address the commission, you don't need to have filled out a card. There are lecturers at the top and the bottom of the room. Anybody wishing to speak, please rise. And seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. And that takes us to Planning Commissioners' reports. Before we move on to the item 5.1, which is the election of the vice chair, I just want to make a couple of comments. I want to just express how grateful I am for the opportunity. This is my first meeting, chairing the Planning Commission. Grateful for the opportunity that I was given, and very happy to continue working with our most excellent staff and my fellow commissioners. It's been a pleasure, and it'll continue to be a pleasure. But more importantly than that, I just want to acknowledge the incredible role model who I get the opportunity to learn from and emulate in my time as chair, however long that that might be. Patty Sisko, who of course is a commissioner, was chair of the Planning Commission for seven years or more, and has been a commissioner for even many years longer than that. Depth of knowledge that nobody has been, you know, able to equal on the commission. And more importantly even than that, a complete inspiring dedication to the work that we do up here, and to making the work that we do effective for the city, to making it matter, to working effectively with the staff and with fellow commissioners. And I owe so much to you in acting as a mentor to me in my time so far on the Planning Commission, and you've played that same role for so many people. And none of that really depends on being the chair or anything else. You still are going to be the authority on the Planning Commission, rightfully so. So I just wanted to be the first person of many to make a statement of appreciation and acknowledgement for the incredible condition that the Planning Commission comes to me in, and all I need to do is do my best to duplicate the exact way that you handled this office. So if anybody on the commission would like to follow and make any statements about Patty and her incredible work, I'd like to just go first maybe to Commissioner Duggan.
Sure, I think you have had the best model for what you're going to take on now, because I know I've always appreciated how thorough and detailed Patty has been. Like our last meeting, how we went item by item through our whole resilient city ordinance. And I think you're going to do a great job.
Great. Commissioner Weeks.
I also wanted to say thank you to Patty. Part of the reason I wanted to join the Planning Commission was because of you, and your work ethic, and the way you run meetings, and your thoroughness, and keeping us on track, and not, as some of us tend to do, kind of ask a question when we shouldn't. So thank you for being a good taskmaster in all the right senses, and I'm going to continue to enjoy working with you. Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gronega.
Well, I just want to echo the thoughts of the other two commissioners spoken so far, three commissioners now. I really appreciate your guidance, your patience with me, as well as acknowledge that you've been a real positive public face to the Planning Commission for a great number of years. And as I sometimes do, I go back in those old minutes and take a look at actions taken as we're asked to do so, and your name is all over it, and your good work has stood out for a great number of years. So I really appreciate the time I've had to serve with you and to serve under you. Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Peterson.
Well, I just, I want to sort of draw attention to two things with the outgoing chair that I really appreciated. One is being not just a good role model to emulate as a commissioner, but being very welcoming, providing all the guidance I could have asked for as I joined this commission. And also having the, I think, rare ability to identify the absolutely key issue of a given project, and really tease that out in a meaningful way while keeping a meeting on track, keeping us on track, and getting these issues resolved.
Thank you.
Great, thanks very much. Patty, do you have any comment you'd like to make?
Well, trying not to get too emotional here, but what I can't believe is how fast all these years went by. You know, when I look at these old minutes, I go, yeah, I remember that meeting, and wow, I just can't believe how fast this has gone by. And I think we're in very, very good and capable hands, so I'm very pleased and proud to see you sit in that seat. And like we all know, and like Chair Edmondson said, we have an amazing staff. And I know, we all know it, because we get an opportunity to work with staff, but you really get the depth of the excellence and the commitment and the passion of our staff members, and just what a great department that we have to work with. And Mike, boy, he's on it. If there's a technical difficulty or whatever, he's so on it, and it's been such a pleasure to work with all of you in that capacity. So, thank you.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Colia.
As the newest member of the Planning Commission, I just want to say thank you so much for my onboarding process. I know when I first got appointed, I was quite nervous because I didn't know what I was getting myself into, and just your thoroughness in walking me through the process has been so incredibly, I'm so incredibly grateful for that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And when we move on to department reports, please, if any staff have any comments to add, please feel free to share those with everybody. Let's move to item 5.1, which is the election of the vice chair. Would any commissioner like to place a name and nomination for vice chair?
Chair Edmondson, I would like to nominate Karen Weeks as vice chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion is to elect Karen Weeks vice chair of the Planning Commission. It was made by Commissioner Sisko, seconded by Commissioner Duggan. Do I have any other motions? And any discussion? Okay, with that, your votes, please. And that passes with seven ayes.
Thank you all.
It's magnetic. Okay. Congratulations, Vice Chair Weeks. Do you have any statement you'd like to make as you begin your vice chairship?
I just would like to say thank you to my fellow commissioners, and I know it's going to be fun, and I know you'll all be patient with me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's move to item six, which is department reports.
Well, I have nothing technical to present, but I do want to take the opportunity to thank Patty for her service as chair. And as you all know, being a commissioner is one tough job. It's time-consuming. You only get the tough projects to evaluate, and you guys do such a seamlessly great job. And Patty, you've just been a great resource and solid anchor for the commission as it's changed over the course of these many years. And it's just been, you've been a great resource for staff, and you give us the confidence that we can work well together. So Chair Edmondson and Vice Chairman Weeks, you guys are going to rise up to the challenge. I know it, and we have a lot of confidence in this commission, and I thank you for setting the foundation, Patty.
Thank you.
So in a few minutes, in a little bit, I'm going to leave and go to the Employee Service Awards, where we celebrate a milestone. So tonight is my 10-year anniversary award. And when you come into the government and you go through the interview process, you go through a panel interview where they select different members to do your evaluation, your screening, and Patty was on my panel interview. So where did the 10 years go, huh? Patty, you're not only just an outstanding planning commissioner, you are a tireless public servant, and I know I speak for just everyone that works with you. You're just a lot of fun, and you're an outstanding person, so thank you for your service. And Chair Edmondson, welcome aboard. It's been a pleasure working with you to date, and I think we're all in very good hands, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's...
Can I say something too?
Of course, I'm sorry.
You're not getting away, Patty. I just wanted to add my thanks to you as well for being sort of a unique position of having gotten to work with you as a planning commissioner and now as staff, and I just really appreciate your mentorship, guidance, and as everyone said, your dedication to this commission and to our community. And I look forward to our continued working relationship, and to you as well, new chair.
Thank you.
I couldn't possibly be the only silent person at this table, so I do want to mimic everything that everybody else is saying, and welcome the new chair and vice chair, but I also wanted to say thank you for always being polite to staff, to applicants, to your fellow commissioners, and it's much appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to item number seven, which is statements of abstention by commissioners. Does any commissioner have a statement of abstention? I do have one. I will be abstaining from item 8.1, the public hearing on the Arbor's planning project. My law firm employer did unrelated work for the applicants in the past. And with that, I will leave the chamber. And leave the chair of the hearing to the vice chair.
And Chair Edmondson and Vice Chair Weeks, I'm going to have to step out on item 8.1 as well, due to a conflict in that I voted on this matter as a planning commissioner. Thank you.
Okay. Tis them under fire. Okay, so this is item 8.1. It's the Arbor's tentative map extension, Ms. Murray. Oh, I'm sorry, I believe I need to declare that this is an ex parte, thank you, ex parte item, and so Commissioner Colia.
I have nothing to disclose.
I visited the site and have nothing else to disclose.
And I have nothing new to disclose.
I have nothing new to disclose.
And I visited the site and have no new information to disclose.
And I also visited the site and have nothing to disclose.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Weeks and commissioners. The project before you is a time extension for the Arbor subdivision. When constructed, this will represent 1.5% of the goal for moderate, I'm sorry, for market rate units, 37 units. The project, the approved project included a tentative map conditional use permit for a small lot subdivision, and a hillside development permit to develop housing on slopes greater than 10%. Before the commission this evening is, or two actually, two 12-month time extensions, or one-year time extensions, which will extend the expiration date, contrary to what that slide says, to April 8, 2019. This, these are two images of the site. One was taken prior to the firestorms of October, and the one in the lower right-hand corner is post-firestorm. It's a little difficult to see, but there's quite a bit of damage to the trees in that area, and as such, we have requested, and the applicant has agreed, to doing a new arborist evaluation for the entire site to see what needs to be removed, what needs to be replaced, and so on. So they have agreed to that. This is the, the site, or the tentative map, and again, there's another error. This is a reused presentation, and it is referencing the wrong address. My apologies. Haste. Anyways, this is, this is for 3500 Lake Park Drive. The project was originally approved back in November of 2010. Through a series of state-mandated time extensions, it was extended to 2016. In 2016, the Planning Commission approved the first of five one-year time extensions. We received an application for the second time extension back in March of last year, and another stacked time extension request, which is before you tonight on January of this year. The general plan land use designation for the site is low-density residential. And the planned, it's zoned PD, planned development, and it's a single, or it's a, yeah, single-family residential planned development, and is consistent with the general plan land use. The project was found in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and there have been no significant changes, well, there have been no changes to the project, and there were significant changes to the site but have been remedied through the arborist evaluation, which I discussed earlier. So the project has been noticed. Staff has received no comments written or otherwise. And with that, Planning and Economic Development is recommending that the Planning Commission approve two 12-month time extensions to extend the Arbor's, the Arbor's subdivision tentative map expiration date to April 8, 2019. And this slide is correct.
Do any commissioners have any questions or clarification of staff at this time? This is a public hearing. If you want to make comments, you don't need to have filled out a card. And if you would like to make comments, please come down to the podium and state your name for the record. Seeing no one rise?
We may have an applicant representative that wishes to present, but just as an option.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to present any items to the commission?
I'm perfectly happy to answer questions. I'm trying to.
Okay, so then I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Can I ask the applicant a question? Yes, I'm sorry. I went up and saw the site again, because I was on the commission the last, when it was first approved, and I noticed there's a "for sale" sign in the vicinity, and I didn't, I wasn't clear if it was for this parcel or the adjoining one.
Well, it's, there is a "for sale" sign on it, but it's not supposed to be there.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's, realtors have a hard time taking the signs down. They like to keep them there for advertising in most cases, but the property is not for sale.
Okay, and so there's a plan to break ground sometime soon and build the project?
That's, yes, I'm working with Mr. Chamberlain, who owns the property.
Okay, good, thank you.
And so...
Can you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Keith Christopherson, Christopherson Builders, 565 West College Avenue, Santa Rosa.
Thank you. Thank you, that's all.
And by the way, Commissioner Sisko.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would somebody like to introduce?
I'm sorry, I also have one question for staff.
Okay.
So I noticed from the renderings and project design documents that it looks like the facades are like wood shake, and I'm wondering if they're going to have to be built to a more stringent fire code, and if that kind of siding is going to be allowed, or does that have to go back to a design review, or especially knowing that all the parcels across the street are gone from the fire?
The renderings that you saw have not been approved by the Design Review Board yet, that the project will be required to go through that process. It has not completed its full entitlement process.
Okay.
So, yeah, so the answer is, I don't know that it will not be able to do that, but it will have to, it will be required to meet building code, and it also has to pass the discretion of the Design Review Board.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Would somebody like to move the resolution?
I'll move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa granting the second one-year extension of time for the Arbor subdivision, extending the expiration date to April 8, 2018, for the property located at 3500 Lake Park Drive, file number PRJ17-012, and wait for the reading.
Second. Okay, that was moved by Commissioner Duggan and seconded by Commissioner Sisko. Commissioner Sisko, do you would like to start in the comments?
One of, one of the nice things about looking at these really old projects is that we get to look at really old minutes, and it's kind of a trip down memory lane tonight for me, and I'm sure for Commissioner Duggan. And this was a, one of the projects that, the configuration of the lot, we actually took a commission field trip to walk that property so that we could really view firsthand the trees and the hillside issues. And so, so that was, that was really good in terms of feeling comfortable approving this project, which I think is an excellent one. One of the ironic things in looking at the minutes was that same night that we originally approved this project, we approved the fire station number five.
I saw that.
So I kind of went, oh. So, but I have no issues, and happy to go ahead and grant the extension.
I'm also happy to grant the extension. I'm glad there's going to be another arborist report, because it's obvious that a lot of the trees have been damaged, so, and that we did, I remember the same field trip that we walked the site, and there's hundreds of trees there, so, but I'm in favor of the project.
Commissioner Colia.
I also support the project, and I think definitely having a contingent on the new arborist report is incredibly important, as the landscape has literally changed, and so, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Gronega.
I have no further questions.
And Commissioner Peterson.
So this is now the second or third, I guess, item that's come up, where visiting the site puts you near the damage from October, and so I think it's hard to see the ruins of a former neighborhood next to the proposed subdivision. And like with those other projects, I think it always raises in my mind the question of putting additional sleeping people in an area where we know, you know, at some point in the near future is likely to burn again. However, I'm not sure that the tentative map extension is the appropriate venue to address those types of concerns. So with that, I mean, I, this project has my qualified support.
Thank you. And I am also going to support the project, so with that, can you all vote? So that is six ayes with Chair Edmondson abstaining. And there's a second resolution there, if somebody'd like to move that?
I'll move the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa granting the third one-year extension of time for the Arbor subdivision, extending the expiration date to April 8, 2019, for the property located at 3500 Lake Park Drive, file number PRJ18-006, and wait for the reading.
Second. Okay, so if you'd please vote. And that also passes with six ayes with Chair Edmondson abstaining.
Okay, let's move on to item 8.2, public hearing for the Art House Vesting Tentative Map Extension. This is an ex parte disclosure. Vice Chair Weeks, anything to disclose?
I visited the site and have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Gronega.
Nothing further to disclose.
Commissioner Peterson.
I visited the site and have no new information to disclose.
Commissioner Sisko.
I have new, no new information or anything to disclose.
Commissioner Duggan.
I visited the site and have no new information.
And Commissioner Colia.
I also visited the site, and I have nothing further to disclose.
And I visited the site and have no further information to disclose. And with that, Aaron Hollister will be presenting the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, commissioners. Aaron Hollister here on behalf of PED to present the Art House Vesting Tentative Map Time Extension. Within this project, there are 21 residential units, which would represent 28% of the total market rate goal of the Housing Action Plan moving forward. Before you this evening is a one-year time extension of the Vesting Tentative Map that was originally approved in June 2008. The new proposed extension date would be June 12, 2018. The vesting map proposed one commercial... The vesting map proposed one commercial condo unit, and this was largely to provide vesting rights for the project. And it would have 21 residential units with two commercial ground floor spaces and a enclosed garage parking space. Improvements would also be proposed at the intersection of 7th Street and Riley Street. Project's located in downtown Santa Rosa. It's in a dense urban environment. To the north is the Cherry, Cherry Street Historic District. Commercial generally surrounds the site to the west and to the south. To the east is a five-story mixed-use building with ground floor commercial, upper floor residential. Project site's currently occupied by a surface parking lot in a 4,700 square foot, single-story commercial building that'd be demolished for the project. In May 2008, the DRB considered the project and granted Plenary Design Review. Moving on in the process, the Planning Commission approved the tentative map and the conditional use permit for a small lot subdivision in June 2008. In June 2010, the map would have expired, however, several state automatic time extensions granted by the state legislature made the new expiration date, June 12th, 2017. In May of last year, the applicant submitted for the new tentative map before you right now, as well as the conditional use permit and the design review, which we considered by staff. Projects located in the retail business service general plan area, which encompasses much of downtown Santa Rosa. It's also within the downtown station area, as well as the courthouse subarea of that plan. Project's owned downtown commercial with a 55-foot height limit. This zoning contemplates the mixed use that's proposed within the project, the ground floor commercial, residential, with the live-work option for some of the residential units, or I should say for all the residential units. This is just some plans and renderings of the project, sorry for the dark images. Again, four-story building with ground floor commercial, fronting on 7th Street, which would activate the 7th Street corridor. There are some proposed tables, chairs to help activate the 7th Street outdoor dining area. Access would be taken from the Riley Street frontage. The project qualifies for Class 32 exemption under CEQA. And this evening, we're recommending approval by PED to you for the time extension request. I should note there was no public correspondence or comment received for the item. I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the commission? Okay. Is the applicant here and wishing to speak, make a presentation about this project? You don't need to, but you're certainly welcome.
Mr. Chair, I took close note of the "don't need to," but I am available for questions. Thank you very much. I believe two commissioners saw this project when it first went through the process. It is a pretty important project, not a large one. And if there's any desire to discuss how it fits into the context of the downtown, be happy to do so. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. I don't have any cards on this item, but you don't need to have filled out a card to speak. Any member of the public who wishes to comment on this project is welcome to do so. Now, let me open the public hearing. And not seeing anybody rise, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any discussion necessary? Chair, excuse me, Commissioner Cisco?
Do we want to move the resolution first?
Oh, of course, yes.
Okay, I'll do that. I move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa granting a one-year extension of time for art house, a vesting tentative map subdivision located at 627th Street, Santa Rosa, assessors parcel number 009025011, file number EXT17-0046, and wait for the reading of the text.
I second.
Okay, Commissioner Cisco, you have a comment or a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, again, it is sort of a trip down memory lane here for a couple of us. And I had actually forgotten this project. And it was an exciting time when we were seeing these. And it's so important to our downtown, exactly what the Urban Three people were all talking about. So it's a very exciting project. Happy to see it get extended and hope to see it get built because it's very, very cool. And again, a particular, much funnier memory than the last set of minutes with the fire station was, I don't, did you notice North Point Park? There was one item on the time that we approved this that was actually one of our more hilarious planning commission meetings, so that Commissioner Duggan participated in. So, but yeah, I'm absolutely for going forward with the extension.
Okay, Commissioner Duggan?
I actually missed this meeting in 2008 because it happened in June and I was on vacation. But at that time, I wished I could have been here for that meeting because I thought it was a real attractive project, and I still do. And I think it's even going to be a nicer corner with, next to the building that I think is also yours. It's built on the corner of 7th and Humboldt. So I'm in favor of extending the tentative map.
Commissioner Colia?
I think this project is incredible and it's amazing to see what you are doing in the downtown. And I think I completely support this project and I'm excited to see, see it done.
I think it's a really neat project and hope you can get it going as soon as possible.
Okay, great. I agree with all the comments that have been made so far. It's a really interesting project. It's the kind of creative thinking that I like to see. It's locating affordable by design units in close proximity to, you know, third-place destinations to work. It's got live-work features to it. A really excellent example of a type of project that I think the city would like to see a lot more of. With that, the motion, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Weeks?
I am also going to be supporting the project. I'm excited to see some residential going in downtown, and I think it's a great spot for it. So hopefully it can go quickly. Thank you.
And Commissioner Peterson?
So I was actually out on 7th Street over the weekend, and I don't know how many people on the commission have seen 28 days later, but that opening scene where he finds himself completely alone in what used to be a inhabited city was sort of the feeling I had. And so projects like this, the mixed use, the draw to bring people downtown, as well as have them live downtown, is exactly the kind of project I think we need, especially when it's served by transit corridors. So I, I'm in support of granting this extension and hope to see it break ground soon.
Great, thank you. So with that, the resolution was made by Commissioner Cisco, seconded by Vice Chair Duggan. Any further discussion? I'm sorry. I don't recall who made the seconded.
Commissioner Duggan made it.
Commissioner Duggan, okay. Okay, if we all understand the motion, despite my best efforts to confuse it, your votes, And that passes with seven ayes. And that concludes item 8.2. We're going to move on to item 8.3. It's a public hearing on the Cary Ranch 1 tentative map extension. That is an ex parte disclosure. Commissioner Cisco, anything to disclose?
Nothing new to disclose.
I've visited the site and have nothing additional to disclose.
Commissioner Colia?
I have nothing to disclose.
Vice Chair Weeks?
I've visited the site and have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Gronega?
Have nothing further to disclose.
And Commissioner Peterson?
I've visited the site and have no new information to disclose.
And I've visited the site and have no further information to disclose. And with that, Aaron Hollister has our staff presentation.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Aaron Hollister here on behalf of PED. What we're going to be considering this evening are two tentative map extensions. The first and second for this project, I'll be allowed five. This project would contain up to 37 units, including the 12 residential accessory units that are proposed within the project. And that would represent one and a half percent of the total 51% market rate goal under the Housing Action Plan. As I mentioned, two consecutive one-year time extensions are proposed for you this evening. The new expiration dates would be one retroactive December 4th, 2017, and one for the upcoming December 4th, 2018, extension date. The tentative map itself proposes to subdivide the almost four-acre site into 25 single-family lots with 12 accessory dwelling units. Lot sizes would range from 3,820 square feet to approximately 6,600 square feet. The smaller lot sizes did require conditional use permit authorization for a small lot subdivision. Improvements to Francisco and San Miguel are also proposed. Indubitably, there's a requirement for a construction pedestrian path that will connect on Francisco all the way up to a concrete path near Jack London School, which is approximately 2,000 feet to the north of the project's site. The project's site is located in northwestern Santa Rosa, and it's at the northwest corner of San Miguel and Francisco. Should be noted that there are approximately 0.7 acres of wetlands on the site, and that's located at the south, at the west, southwest corners and southeast. There was mitigation put forth in the previously adopted mitigating negative declaration, and there will be banking of the wetlands at an off-site site for the wetland considerations. The Cary Ranch 1 subdivision was one of three that was originally analyzed underneath the previously adopted M&amp;D. Cary Ranch subdivisions 2 and 3 are located directly to the north. It's unknown at this time if those will be moving forward. The remainder of the surrounding area is residential in nature, single-family. The project area was originally annexed into the city in 2000 in the head-up rezoning of open space conservation, actually, with a general plan of low-density residential. There was a rezoning request, and that would help match up the zoning to the general plan, and that was in 2007, at the time the Planning Commission recommended the city council adopt the M&amp;D. And I should say, the city council, that the Planning Commission recommended adoption of the rezone from the open space to the R16. The Planning Commission did approve the tentative map and small lot conditional use permit, however, those were appealed to the city council. The city council ultimately considered the whole of the project, which included the tentative maps, small lot rezone, mitigating neg deck, and approved that. The time extension would bring this forward to December 2017, the first one, and December 2018 for the second one. The project is located in low-density residential general plan designation, which allows 28 units per acre. The project as proposed would be 6.8 units per acre, and it's in an R16 zoning, which is common in the area. It allows for single-family development, attached, single-family development. This is the approved tentative map. A new road would be put in through the project site and be accessed from Francisco. The road would actually connect, there'd be opportunity for it to connect to future roads in the northerly Cary Ranch 2 and 3 subdivisions, and it would connect to Orleans to the west. 25 lots are proposed, as I mentioned, and there's a remainder parcel, parcel A, which was proposed for stormwater retention. City council adopted the mitigating neg deck on December 4th, 2007, and there's no additional environmental review pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section 15162, and that substantial changes are not proposed in the project. Substantial changes did not occur with respect to the circumstances that the project was undertaken, and no new information of substantial importance was made available in the interim period. We did receive a couple of public comments on this. One was from a neighbor to the south who had concerns about additional development in the area, and they had concerns regarding open space conversion to residential, as well as riparian corridor areas that would be demolished. I should note that no riparian corridor or, in the site is not designated as open space. We also received a comment from the neighborhood group, and they were seeking assurance that the project was as, is as it was in the past, that there's no changes, and they're particularly concerned about that Francisco Trail that I mentioned earlier. So we reassured them that that was still part of the project. And I'm going to be concluding my presentation, and I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission for staff? Okay, thanks very much. Is the applicant here and wishing to speak on this project?
Good afternoon. Andy Bordessa, Civil Design Consultants, 2200 Range Avenue, Santa Rosa. I'm the civil engineer on the project and here to answer any questions. The owner of the project was not able to be here today, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission for the applicant at this time? This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards on this item. You don't need to have filled out a card if you want to speak. Not seeing anybody rise. I'm going to close the public hearing. And would anybody like to move a resolution for purposes of discussion?
I'll move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa granting first one-year extension of time for Cary Ranch 1, a subdivision located at 2181 Francisco Avenue, Santa Rosa, assessors parcel number 034-041-0112, file number EXT16-0031, and wait for the reading.
Second.
The motion was made by Commissioner Duggan, seconded by Commissioner Cisco. Vice Chair Weeks, do you have any thoughts on the project?
Well, I'd like to see it start sooner rather than later, and I think it's appropriate to approve the extension, so I'm in support of it.
Okay, Commissioner Gronega?
No, I have no substantive questions or issues about this, and just want to extend my thanks to Aaron and Susie Murray for responding to some kind of technical questions I had that I was up way too late that night asking, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Peterson?
I don't know that I have a whole lot to add to this discussion. It seems like a fairly straightforward extension that I'm in favor of. I appreciate that the public comment was addressed very succinctly by both staff and the resolution itself in terms of keeping things as is, as well as the improvements that will be made to Francisco Avenue to sort of ease the interaction between kids walking to school and traffic. With that in mind, I will echo the vice chair's comments, you know, sooner rather than later is always good, and passing along.
Commissioner Cisco?
I'm in favor of approving the extension.
Commissioner Duggan?
I'm also in favor of the extension.
Commissioner Colia?
I'm also in favor of the extension.
And I'm in favor of the extension. So with that, the resolution was moved by Commissioner Cisco, seconded by Commissioner Duggan. And your votes, please. And that passes with seven ayes. Would anybody like to move the resolution for the second extension?
I'll move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Santa Rosa granting the second one-year extension of time for Cary Ranch 1, a subdivision located at 2181 Francisco Avenue, Santa Rosa. Francisco Avenue, Santa Rosa, assessors parcel number 034-041-012, file number EXT17-054, and wait for the reading.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Duggan, seconded by Commissioner Cisco. Any further discussion? And your votes, please. And I believe we'll need to take another vote. And that passes with seven ayes, and that concludes the agenda for this meeting.